We good? All right, I'd like to call this Tuesday, September 24th, Town Council Workshop to Order. I will note we've added one thing at the end of the agenda, item eight. Bruce is going to give us an update on Ocean Avenue. And then the first order business is to go into closed session. For those of you, especially our invited guests, I really hate leaving you out here for 15 minutes or so, but it'll be very brief. So, motion to go into closed session to discuss an attorney-client matter in accordance with NCGS 1433181183. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You doing my conference? I didn't even... Do you pay any attention on purpose?
All right. Yes. Get to the map.
All right, thank you.
All right, we got everyone?
That's really the only...
Just expect it.
Thank you all.
You got to go watch.
Goldfish.
All right, council has returned from closed session. No action was taken. Resuming our normal workshop agenda, we'll start with employee recognition. Mark, is that you?
Good morning, council. My name is Mark Meyer. I'm Director of Public Utilities. I am here to congratulate and discuss Roy Gardner, who is one of our equipment operators. And Roy's been here 20 years, and he's one of those guys, when you show up at work, you know you're going to smile if you see Roy, because you don't know if he's up to something. He's just one of those guys that just always makes you laugh, no matter how bad the day is, you look over at Roy. It's just one of those things. And I've had the pleasure of working with Roy since I've been here in 2015. And through hurricanes, through good times, through bad times, through, you know, staff shifts, Roy has always been a rock for us. And man, he can run equipment like nobody's business. And again, I don't know how to explain this, you just smile when you see Roy. And that's hard to do for us. So, Roy, would you...
But I would like to thank you and, you know, everything you guys have done for employee recognition and also keeping staff happy about working here. He's always enjoyed it here. And he always has been the biggest proponent of this place. Sometimes I wonder...
Roy, I'd like to...
Roy, you got me laughing now. I don't know what's funny.
Roy, I would like for you to take a message about your coworkers. During this event, I mean during all the events, you guys are amazing, but I have had more people come to me and talk about the effort that you guys are doing. They see you guys out there, they see the work going on, and I just wanted to commend you and the whole team. So please take that word back to them. The public is so grateful for you guys, especially over this last week.
Do it.
Right. Thanks, sir.
Mark, just so you know, Roy and I have had numerous occasions to work together on the gator.
Everybody's had...
Carrying equipment for bands, so I won't go into those stories.
Thank you, Roy.
Roy is like riding around with your own talk show.
So, next on the agenda, I actually put this on the agenda because, you know, with my work with, my involvement with Cape Fear Council of Governments, I think a lot of times, we're unaware of, I know I'm unaware, of a lot of the services that they provide. So I've learned a ton that I've been working with them. So what I've asked is Andrea to come and talk about their homeless services. I just thought it would be good, because I know lots of times we get questions from others. So Andrea?
Good morning. I hate to follow up, Roy, that's a big job, but here I am.
You have to make us laugh now.
I know. A lot of pressure. It's fine. I'm Andrea Stowe. I'm the Homeless Services Director at the Cape Fear Council of Governments. Alan Sorkin, our executive directors here, think mostly for moral support. But we are the lead agency, HMIS lead, CE lead, and collaborative applicant for the Cape Fear Homeless Continuum of Care. I put up our mission and vision. We are looking for a community where all of our folks have access to safe, affordable housing, and that's really our overarching goal. And then we look at putting partnerships together. A lot of times, people confuse the continuum of care with the COG, we're just one piece in that really important puzzle. So we talked a little bit about that. It is a county, three-county-wide alliance of service providers, local leaders, local government, healthcare agencies. We are governed by a board of directors. Each county has a designated seat, as well as someone with lived experience, to be able to help direct our work as a collective. Our shared goal is making homelessness rare, brief, and nonrecurring. So we want folks to rarely ever have to experience it. Obviously, if it does happen, for it to be a quick transition, and then we don't want folks to continue that cycle over and over again. And we are just looking to, again, maximize our efforts as a community, strategically look at this issue, and how do we come together for solutions? There are kind of primary responsibilities we have. One of the first ones is we coordinate funding through HUD. They have two different funding streams that we have a competitive competition for. So local agencies in those three counties can apply for that funding. The people that make that decision are not me. Sometimes I think Alan and I are just throwing money around. To be on that committee that makes that decision, you can be, you cannot be an agency receiving money. So we do get some funding for our services, and so we are not even part of the committee that makes the decision. Those are, some of our local leaders sit on that government, that committee. Some of our folks in healthcare and those type of agencies are generally making up that group. We also operate a coordinated entry system. I'll talk a little bit more about that, because it's one of our core services. But we are tasked with making our system as easy as possible for those people experiencing homelessness. We know that can be traumatic, we know how stressful that can be, and we don't want them to have to run circles everywhere to try to figure out where to go. We want to have an entry point where that person knows where all of those services are, what they're eligible for, and how we can get them connected as soon as possible. So that's a system that we operate. We are also asked to maintain a HMIS, which is just our fancy way of saying our database, that tracks services across those three counties. So we have about 35 programs from 13 different agencies that track all of their services in this database. So we have a complete picture of who's experiencing homelessness, what that looks like for folks, how effective our programs are, and so it gives us that opportunity to make the best decisions we can about services and how to serve folks. So these are the funding streams that we help administer. So there are two different main grants. One is the Continuum of Care Grant. That one is predominantly for housing solutions. So if you see under there, it says permanent supportive housing. That's housing that comes along with a little bit of case management to make that successful. We have rapid rehousing, where we get folks some temporary assistance to get rehoused if they're experiencing homelessness. It is not long-term, is for those folks that just need a little bit of a boost, and then they can go on after that bump. We also have prevention in that area, and then running our systems that do have some cost to it, and then they're supportive services only. Last year, we administered just over $511,000 to multiple agencies under that grant. And we are tasked at the COG, as a lead agency, to do some monitoring evaluation, make sure that they're meeting their outcomes and goals, and doing what they've said that they were going to do on their application. The other pot is emergency solutions, and that's exactly what it sounds. It's more for those temporary emergency things like street outreach, where folks that are experiencing unsheltered homelessness have someone that can come out to them where they are, help them get connected, help them get IDs, help them, if they are eligible for other resources, to make sure they're connected to services that doesn't require them to be in a place. And then support for our emergency shelters. Some of you may know, there is very limited emergency shelter in all three counties, including New Hanover, who is the only county that has a brick-and-mortar shelter. And one of those is offline, Salvation Army temporarily. And so that has created an immense pressure on our system. So we have folks that need somewhere to go, and unfortunately, a lot of those coordinated entry calls is, let's get you through for the next few weeks, months, till you can actually even get into a shelter. We also have the healing place that has 14 temporary beds, seven for men and seven for women. It is a wild lottery every day for who gets there first to access it, but it is an option for folks. And so that grant was just over $163,000 that we administered, again, to local projects and local agencies that are doing this work. So our coordinated entry system is exactly what it sounds like. On the left, it says that someone in a housing crisis. The thing that we know is that it's not a one-size-fits-all. Some folks need more support than others. Some folks, homelessness may be caused by a temporary loss of employment, it may be caused by a myriad of different issues. So we take the time to figure out what's going on with that person, and then help direct them through the many solutions that we have. And we want to make sure the solution we connect them to fits their situation. You don't want to, maybe someone who could just use a little bit of temporary rental assistance, you don't want to use that permanent supportive housing where it's long-term. We want to right-size our support. So that's what our intake specialists are doing. They're getting information about what their strengths are, what maybe their challenges are, to figure out what solution works, all with the hopes of entering permanent housing. Again, before this system, and I, prior to this, was a shelter director in Wilmington for domestic violence, and there's nothing more frustrating than having someone have to call six different agencies and have the door shut on them, because maybe they didn't qualify that, or they didn't know that this particular thing had to happen for that. So the system should work where they can enter one door, have access to all the resources, and that's what we're doing now. We meet with our direct service providers at least twice a month, including today, to look at anyone new to the system. We make sure they're connected to somebody. We make sure if there are certain things they need, that they have someone that can at least help as a light touch to navigate that system. And then any options that we have for housing get put on the table as a collective group. There's not a lot of hoarding resources for just our people, we're making sure everybody has them. So there's some data from the coordinated entry system. So a lot of folks want to know, well, what exactly are we talking? Are we talking 10 people? Are we talking 500 people? For that federal fiscal year, there was 2017 folks enrolled in our coordinated entry system. One of the major issues that we have now are the ones that I highlighted, is the number of people leaving the system was 684, but we still had over 1,300 people that had nowhere to leave to. And so we're seeing this kind of backlog happening. And so as a collective group, we're working on how do we transition from that. Our system does show that 278 of those leavers were to permanent housing situations. So they're on their own, they're renting something, they maybe have a little bit of support. The blue is temporary solutions. Some of them go live with family or friends. So those are all of the different ways that people can exit. And what we know is, that issue is, we don't have a lot of folks exiting right now. And then we maintain the database that does a lot of our mandatory reporting to HUD. So HUD makes sure that we give them a housing inventory count that says, are you using the beds you have? We were right around 90-some percent, and the only reason we are a little bit lower is we had some special population shelters. We have a special shelter just for veterans, so if there doesn't happen to be a veteran needing that at the moment, they might be empty. The same with our victim service providers, they are very limited, or we have children-only beds that sometimes are not full. But all of our regular shelters were at 100 or more capacity. We also do a point-in-time count. So once a year, the last 10 days of January, and I do have a little side with the numbers for that, we are tasked with doing a census of all of our homeless folks, both sheltered and unsheltered, to get a picture of just one day, day in the life, how many folks are homeless in our community. And so we do have a little bit of figures on that, just to show you where we're at. And then we're also looking at two other reports that just look at our system, how are we functioning? Some of the great things that come out of that data, one, top right, is we learned that as a community, we are particularly effective at keeping people housed. We have one of the lowest returns to homelessness. I'd like to say this because we do really a great job, and I do really firmly believe that. We are also exiting much fewer people to permanent supportive housing, so we're able to wrap them in support. The one on the bottom also shows that statewide, 69% of folks that entered homelessness were first-time homelessness in our entire state. We are actually at 79%. So the vast majority of our folks are people that are new to homelessness. They're entering it for the first time. And that's not just their self-report, our system tracks, have they been in the system? We share a database with seven other COCs throughout this state. So we kind of know where folks are, whether they're returning or not. So we know that that is. And so the top left is just also looking at, we have the, I think, fifth highest housing wage. So we know that our housing market has kind of squeezed a lot of folks, and that's why we possibly are having folks entering homelessness, is that it's been harder and harder to maintain housing.
Is that, wait, so that 2521, that is the amount someone needs to make to reach, to be able to afford minimum housing? Is that what that means?
To afford a one, a two-bedroom, and ours is actually higher for a two-bedroom. That says, across the state, a two-bedroom fair market rent is 1371. Ours is 13-something for a one-bedroom. So that is in order to maintain that rent. So if you were to get a one-bedroom, that's the wage you need to make to afford it, to be considered affordable.
Wow.
Yeah. So particularly, and I don't know how far the lag is, I think we're going to see that even higher. I think we're going to probably move up as a...
Yeah, as housing.
Community, yeah. So yeah, that is one of the biggest challenges for our folks, is, once you're experiencing homelessness, even if you're at risk for it, is finding somewhere affordable within your means to live, for sure. Our point-in-time count, the interesting part about that, we talk a lot about, I think homelessness is a lot more visible right now, and it is great that we're all talking about it. But we do track things over time. So in our point-in-time count, we tracked from 2009 to this year, and we are actually at a lower rate of homelessness, if you look at the overall number, than we were in 2009. But the interesting fact is, we had a almost 32% increase in population growth. So that added, folks, I think, make a lot of this much more visible, and really makes it tricky on how we address it. We did have an increase in the unsheltered homelessness, and we think that may also be because we had a major shelter go offline. And, you know, a lot of times when folks encounter people that are unsheltered, they're like, well, go to a shelter, and the reality is, that's not an option. And most of the larger shelters are for single individuals. And what we know is, about 54% of our folks entering homelessness in our coordinated entry system are part of a family. And so family options are very limited. We have families that are... We have families that are two and three children, parents staying in their cars right now because there's no shelter to go through. So some of the things that our group is looking at, we do have a creative solutions group that is exploring safe parking initiatives with some communities of faith. So if we can't get you in a shelter, can we get you somewhere safe in the meantime till we can do some things? We're looking at increasing access to transportation so folks can work, folks can get to medical appointments. So we're looking at all those other little pieces while housing continues to remain a little bit of an enigma. And then these are our numbers. I wanted to leave time for questions and answer anything you might have about this issue. That top number is our coordinated entry access line. So we have folks that will answer that phone and do those intake and assessments. We really strive that everyone has equal accesses, equal access to resources. So we're not trying to cherry pick who we're going to serve because it's going to be easier to serve them. We want to really help the most vulnerable, but make sure that everyone has that kind of warm hand to help guide them through the system. So that number is manned by about three part-time folks. And then I do a little bit of everything, and Joe does our database and our reports. So we're always available. A lot of what we're doing now is making our system track things that we locally want to know. So if there are things that you would like to know, we've heard from a lot of folks. How many people are employed? How many have a reliable transportation? We're working on beefing up our assessment so that we can answer those local questions, not just those things we have to report on.
So for council, just, I think everyone's aware, but just, or maybe for the public. So we are members of the Cape Fear Council of Governments, have been for as long as I've been, probably, I don't know how long, but certainly longer than I've been here.
Nineteen sixty-eight.
Nineteen sixty-eight, Alan says, so a long time. We do know them mostly through like our UDO process, right? So I really wanted you to see, there are other arms, if you will, the Cape Fear Council of Governments. So that's why I invited Andrea here. I think this is a huge issue. It's, homelessness is just always an issue, and I want you to be able to see the work they're doing. So any questions for Andrea?
I've got one. So you had a slide, like five, six slides ago, that showed, I think it was two grants that equaled like seven-hundred-thousand dollars total, roughly, around about. Is that, is that what you have to work with?
Yes.
You don't have any more of that?
No. So we, as a community, they have this fancy formula that tells us what our need is, and it's over a million dollars. Unfortunately, that's not what we have access to this coming year. I think it's actually our annual renewal demand is a little bit less. So we are trying to do more with less, for sure. That is our two, yeah, primary sources of funding, and the majority go to programs.
That's not a lot of money.
Mm-mm. Yeah.
Andrea, of course, a lot of the service providers are nonprofits that get
Alan, you're going to have to come to the microphone because people home won't be able to hear you.
There is a little bit of public money from City Wilmington, New Hanover County, Penner County, and Brunswick County that provides match to those dollars. And then there's also, those service providers are also matching the funds that we're administering. And a lot of these agencies, like Good Shepherd Center, you know, I don't know what kind of money we're giving Good Shepherd Center, but they have lots of other money they have access to. So that's the public money. That doesn't include the private donations for the nonprofits. But it is sort of the bulk of the funds that are available to address the issue. I'll also note, if you'll notice, like, we're not talking about feeding. We're not talking about, you know, showers and, you know, workforce development kind of stuff, like healthcare, you know, addiction issues. Those, there are other systems in place to deal with those things. That's why we're focused on the housing piece, because there isn't really another system that helps the homeless find housing, which of course, if you have housing, you're not homeless. You might have all those other issues, and there are systems to deal with that. But the housing piece is the piece that sort of, you know, is the first to fall apart, and there isn't really another system to help deal with that. So that's really, most of that money is focused on the housing component.
So I know Wilmington is looking into affordable housing. Is that going to help your cause?
It can't hurt. So what we've
Are they still going to be priced out?
Yeah. So what we were, what we've expressed, so there is, a lot of our service providers as well as ourselves have been involved in the task force that's really been talking through that and helping kind of make suggestions. You know, it definitely, we need housing at all levels. So obviously, the more that we have, hopefully, there'll be access. But our folks are not guaranteed. So what we said is, if you have a housing thing that is even vaguely affordable and you have somebody who has a rental history, someone who has good credit, who's not homeless, who hasn't had to make kind of those decisions, who's going for the same unit as maybe someone who's experiencing homelessness, you, that person just makes that decision to say, "Okay, one of these folks get this housing," and it's often not the person experiencing homelessness. We had a place open up, and we did kind of an informal poll. We're only one of our clients actually got in that, you know, sixty to eighty unit place. But it's one person, and that definitely is not a bad thing. I do think some of these will make a dent, for sure, and we are already tracking applications for them. We know that there's a senior one opening up, and we have seen a large increase in senior, over sixty-five, coming into our system. So we're hoping that will make a big dent for that population.
I would think it would, at a minimum, it will cut down on the compression, right? People falling, sort of falling through the tears, if you will, because the more, like you said, if you don't have housing at this level, then these people are just going to move
Push down.
Push down, and then it pushes the, the ones at the lowest
Yeah, and they can't move up.
Yeah, they can't move up, so.
But they will always be the hardest to find housing because in the housing market we live in, it was the Bowen Report that the city or the county did a couple of years ago, you know, identified various different housing price points, the, you know, supply of housing versus the demand. And there was an undersupply at every level. The number-one level in quantity was at the highest level, a hundred thousand dollars of income and above. That's the biggest shortage of housing. So if, you know, if even those folks are having trouble finding housing, and it all just sort of pushes down, the folks that are experiencing homelessness just, you know, have an especially difficult challenge finding a unit. And they're all competing, you know, for the same limited number of units at that most affordable price point.
Got it.
Yeah.
Before you do, I mean, it's not easy.
Deb, did you have a
Well, I think Alan answered my question because I was going to ask how we're helping the folks with addiction and mental health issues, so.
So although that's not our primary focus, we are tasked with coordinating those services. So we are very lucky to be in the COG. We are connected to our area agency, Office on Aging, and our workforce development. So if someone has employment issues, our workforce development folks have done a really great job, you know, kind of stepping in their coastal healing place, they're all at the table. So we know that folks, when they are stably housed, are going to be better equipped to handle some of those other challenges in life. So we try to come alongside in those spaces. Our creative solutions, you know, we may not be in the business of showers and things like that, but we do help get folks to the table that do those things. One of our other initiatives, we're working with emergency management. Sometimes these storm events happen and they don't warrant opening up a shelter. But we know particularly for unsheltered folks, it doesn't take a certain category for it to be a dangerous situation. So we're looking at how do we stand up more support for that? We have a cold shelter, so if it gets really cold, that opens up. We're seeing if we can do that for weather events that maybe aren't at the level that the county needs to open, as well as heating when it gets overly hot. So we are not in those things, but we're at those tables bringing those folks together.
I think it's also worth noting that, you know, particularly with the permanent supportive housing, but even with the rapid rehousing, some amount of case management dollars accompany the housing assistance dollars. And so the case managers that are working with these clients are helping connect them to these other services based on the needs of the individual client. So if there's substance abuse issue, there's a case manager that's sort of trying to help them with that issue. I think the problem is, as Jay mentioned, there's not enough money in the system. And so we don't have nearly as many people registered in those programs that have case management as we have need. And so there are people who are being unserved. But when they're in a program, that program has sort of wraparound services to help them succeed.
Okay. And we do have folks that get into a really good place and move on. So we've had, even in our permanent supportive housing, where someone has had those maybe addiction issues addressed, and now they're making better income. And so they actually income out and find their own place and no longer need our services. So every, even it sounds permanent supportive housing, but we do an annual certification review. So if that person can make it somewhere else, we work on a moving on process too. So we really look at tailoring that support to what somebody needs. You know, some of our folks on disability may not cycle out, but we are looking and making sure that we can continue to move the system forward and hopefully move our community forward.
Any other questions for Andrea?
So the case management part is an initial action that takes place when an individual or family is, checks in.
It continues throughout the process.
Yes, so our coordinated entry initial touching base, making sure, but once they're connected, the services that we provide, rapid rehousing or the funding, the type of programs we fund, require case management be offered and available to folks. So it is an ongoing for the life of that person's involvement in the program. So our average length in permanent supportive housing is four years. That person has case management all along those, those times.
Awesome. Mike, anything?
The only comment I would make is that twenty-five bucks an hour is not as easy as it sounds to go get. And you'd only all be surprised how much on the razor's edge some people you know are.
Oh, I'm sure.
I can speak personally, I have some friends who are closer to this than I care to admit.
Yeah, especially after a storm or something like this. Well, I just wanted you guys to come here, I thought was important for us here. Is there any way, other than continuing to support council of governments, anything we can do to help? Or if you don't have it off the top of your head, feel free to reach out to us. I don't know how we can help.
It's important to make sure that your staff know about that coordinated entry hotline, that first phone number, so that if any, you know, police or, you know, anybody else is interacting with folks who are homeless and they're not connected to services, that's a good way to get them connected to services and get them in the system. And then the other thing is, we do our annual point-in-time count in January. So, you know, we canvass the entire county and all three counties. So there may be an opportunity for, you know, staff or whatever to assist. If you guys know where there might be encampments or other things like that, to help point us in the right direction so we make sure we get those folks counted.
Awesome.
And then if anyone, if this is an issue that is particularly near and dear to anyone that you know of, we are a working board, and we have a lot of committees. You don't need to be on our board to be on a committee, but we have those type of things that work on solutions. So if you know of someone or a staff member that you know would be particularly connected, because the more voices we have from, you know, different communities, you know, making sure Carolina Beach needs are being addressed at these issues or being highlighted. So we know what your particular needs may be. So don't hesitate to reach out to, to let us know, "Hey, this is what I'm seeing." If you need anything from us, data-wise or just service, we went out to Surf City Police Department. It was noticing an influx. So we got some assessors on the street there to just see if we could connect with folks. So if you're seeing that and you need that, we have assessors that aren't just answering the phone. They're out in our spaces. Our street outreach teams are there. So we can offer that support if you're, just don't know what to do with a situation or someone that's experiencing homelessness. I don't hesitate to call. We'll be there, we'll figure out how to, how to get there.
But at the same time, it is important to remember, like Andrea said, the shelters are at capacity, right? And so when you're homeless, you inherently have nowhere to go, right? So the public sector, elected officials especially, and the public are pressuring their elected officials to think, "There's a homeless person, we need to do something with them," right? They need to go somewhere else. But where is somewhere else? The shelter's full. If not on public property, then you push the problem onto private property. I don't think it's the role of government to be putting the burden on the private property owners. And so, you know, while there are things that we can do to sort of help the situation, I think it's very important to remember that these folks are incredibly vulnerable, and they literally have nowhere to go, and they have to be somewhere. And that's sort of the challenge. So, you know, just, you know, keep that in mind as I'm sure there will be, you know, situations where you guys will be encountering somebody who's homeless in the community.
Awesome. Well, I want to thank you guys for coming. You know, my time on council of governments has been very eye-opening, and you guys are doing just fantastic work, and I just want to share that with council to understand how we fit into that. So thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
So we went from laughter to homelessness now. I'm not sure. Everybody take a deep breath.
Such a downer.
Next on the agenda was a resolution of support for the City of Wilmington. I think I can give a really brief overview of this, but basically, they're, through the federal government, there are grant opportunities. They're trying to replace a couple of bridges. I think it's the Fourth Street Bridge. And, oh, Lord, now I'm going to forget it. It's in the resolution.
I drove drive.
But anyway, this couple, but we, they are asking us to support their grant application. And I, they offered to come today, but I was, basically, I think we're, I couldn't come up with a reason why we wouldn't support their grant application, so. So if everybody is okay with that, I'm going to make a motion of support for Resolution twenty-four dash twenty-three fifteen, supporting the City of Wilmington's grant application. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, update from Chief Ward. Well, he's coming up. One of the things I liked about their grant application is there's some environmental positives in getting rid of some of those old bridges. I mean, transportation and all that's important, but I really like the way they are looking at improving the environment around those, not just putting a new, not slapping in another bridge. I was real excited about that. Chief?
Good morning. Just wanted to follow up on that presentation we just had and show you how it really works. So a individual calls, and this is a manager of a big, I'm not going to mention any names or any businesses, manager of a large establishment on the town of Carolina Beach. He calls me, he says, "Hey, I need to talk to you about something." I said, "Yeah, what you got?" And it was a family situation. And he said, and it was brought to his attention by his employees, that a lady was, you know, homeless or appeared to be homeless, and the other employees brought it to his attention, said, "Hey, we'd like to help her." So he did a little bit of investigating on it, and he found out that, just exactly like they said, that she was actually in a car, sleeping in a car. And this, she was working. I mean, she was working at this gentleman's place. And so he went out there and saw two young children. When I say young, I mean like infants, like very small, and a, and another man in the car. So we had a meeting, I went out there and met him and talked to, you know, she weren't asking for anything. She never came begging, she never said, "Hey, I need help, I need money," none of that. She was, she was, I mean, she was working. She was trying to do the right thing, and there was no drug problem, no, none of that. So got talking to her, and she was very embarrassed about it. And I let her know, "Hey, we're not here as a police. I'm here just to try to get you some help, see, you know, what we can do." So called everywhere, every single place on our resource, and of course, I got this, and we're going to use them as well, but we have a exhaust, we have a big, long list over there of places where we can try to get people help. Every single one of them was full. And like she said, I was going to mention the Salvation Army, and she's right, man. Salvation Army is being remodeled or renovated. They're completely down. They have like nothing. And kept digging, kept digging, kept digging. So finally, I talked to another business owner down here, again, not going to mention any names. And I said, "I need some help." And she said, "What do you need?" And I told her, and she said, basically, "You got it." So she was able to house these folks for a week. And a week makes a huge difference when you've got kids sleeping in a car. And exactly like they were talking about, she was moving from place to place in a parking lot in the county, and sheriff's office was getting complaints, "Hey, there's homeless people in a car." So the sheriff's office would get called out there, and they would tell, I mean, the deputy was just doing his job. He wasn't doing anything wrong, but he was like, "You got to move this car." Because whether they were at Walmart or somewhere else, people were complaining. And of course, you know, they were being good citizens, they were seeing small children in a vehicle, and they realized that, man, these people are probably living out of this car. So they were doing it out of concern, but the bottom line is, they couldn't stay at the business. So she was trying to find somewhere to park. So the reason why it got to the employees, because she was parking in the parking lot of this business, that's what drew attention to the employees. They kind of went out there and looked, and they said, "Oh, my gosh, these kids are staying in a car while she's working." So anyway, she was able to make contact, but that's the way it works in the real world. You have to work around, and people step up that don't want any recognition. And these people that I'm talking about, they would, they would, they would have a huge issue if I was to name their names. But that's the way we work it. Because when we go down our phone tree list or whatever, and there's nothing there, that's an issue. I mean, there's, you know, talking about, my grandmother used to say you can't get blood out of a turnip. I was at turnip stage at that point, just trying to help this lady out, so. But that's what all my folks do. We don't, you know, especially when there's kids involved. It's one thing I'm sleeping in a car, but it's another thing when I got two infants in a car. So we can, these people step up around here, more than you, more than you would know. So anyway. you, more than you would know. So anyway, what I did, Bruce asked me to get together. Our busy part of the time is obviously May, June, July, and August during the season. So I can, you know, Debbie wanted me to do a four hour presentation with a graph and everything. I said, Debbie, just hold on, they might not want that. So I kind of, I'm doing the meat and potatoes presentation too, but I mean, that's really the chunk. That's our, that's our lion chair. So just, just want to throw some numbers. And I can put this in a, in a much prettier format and give it to Bruce. So y'all can all have a copy of it. But just, you know, when you look at some of the raw data, it's a, and I knew it was going to be kind of, kind of up there. You know, when you look at May, June, July, and August, we issued 534 citations. We arrested 132 individuals. And the forensic lab over there, which again is a crown jewel over there, they did 553 forensic examinations. So in all that, what I just told you, there was a, you know, we had seven hundred, over seven, 702 violations. And we, the charges were, you know, over 300. So that's, that's pretty doggone busy. Now, when you look at calls for service during that same time period, May had over 1600 calls for service. June is pretty close, 1635 calls for service. July, almost 1800, so 1798 calls for service. And in August, it was 1758 calls for service. When you start breaking down those calls for service, you kind of do a, you kind of do a dual angle here. And one of them is self-initiated. That means the officer took it upon him or herself to initiate contact. They see a suspicious person. They make a traffic stop. They see something without getting called by dispatch that they put attention to it. And when you look at the total calls over that, over the May, June, July, and August, you're looking at almost 7,000, about 6,800 calls for service. Right out of those, over 4,400 were self-initiated. That means you're not getting called, you're not getting told to do something. You're not getting told about somebody being assaulted or there being a vehicle accident or somebody, a business owner calling you, hey, somebody's looking in my window, or a homeowner calling you. Man, you're initiating that, you're initiating it yourself by being proactive, by walking the boardwalk, by getting on Canal Drive, looking at stuff, by going over here to communities, riding around, by getting out at the school, so forth and so on. So again, the total for those months was over 6,800. And the lion's share, again, if you break it down in those two categories, self-initiated and where nine, you know, 911 is giving the calls to you, you know, a big, a big chunk of that is suspicious persons. About like one month, 44 suspicious persons that we weren't called about, that the officers were just riding around saying, hey, man, Jay Healy looks suspicious or whatever. We don't know if it's Jay Healy, but we got a guy, because I love you. You know, we see somebody that we can identify at a time of the morning or night in an unusual location and we're initiating contact with him. We didn't get called, we're just saying, hey, sir, how are you, you know, going up there initiating contact? You know, chances are he's a good guy. He may be a bad guy. And then it goes from there. And then it can turn into an arrest. It can turn into a, just a contact, a conversation. Oh, I'm out here, you know, whatever. Okay, just wanted to verify what you were doing. And we get a lot of, we do get a lot of 911 calls and the public is very, you know, with the Ring cameras and some of the other technology, they're, they're letting us know what's going on. But it's, it's, it's looking right here with your eyes and going around, riding around, or even getting out walking, and getting that information maybe second and third hand that prevents a lot of stuff. And I can't tell you how much stuff we prevented. That's a, that's one of those unknown numbers. But I can tell you, I can give you the raw numbers of, of the proactivity. And then, you know, from the aspect of what we initiated and what we were called to. And just a lot of work, a lot of good work. And again, we did have one or two significant incidents. One of them, I don't think any way possible we could have prevented. But again, if you lay that template over and over again, I'll probably take it again. If you're going to put some cards on the table, I'll say, I'll take that hand right again. Again, we sure as heck didn't have less people come on the island over the summer. So, and I wish, I wish I could give you that total. I wish I could give you a car count. And we do have technology with some of that, but that would be interesting. See how many people come over to island in those four months. And then of course, it's not just a car count. How many people are in those cars that traveled over the island? So it was very busy, but I would deem it very, very successful. And they're doing, doing a great job over there. So I'll be glad to take any questions.
Chief, one of the things I think the reason we asked for this is quite often we hear, I won't call them complaints, but just people, well, why isn't there a police officer here? Why isn't there a police officer, you know, chasing some kid that knocked over my trashcan? Or why, not that, that's a bad thing to complain about. I'm not saying that. I'm just saying it's a prioritization, right, for your staff. I look at these numbers and I just, my head goes to this, like, okay, how much, what's the average length of each call? How long does it take? And then how many people's that? I mean, from these numbers, especially during those months, you guys have to be wide open all day. I mean, there's no other way to look at it other than, I mean, there's no, not to make a police joke, but there's no doughnut eating going on, right? I mean, these guys are wide open and these numbers show that.
And just, and I didn't say this.
Nothing against doughnuts for you doughnut owners out there. I didn't mean that.
On the arrest part of it, you know, when there's a physical arrest, unless there's a magistrate available, you know, we have to make that trip. And so we have to go off the island. And if it's a, you know, if it's a couple of folks, man, it's, we like to go two on one. We like to, we like to send two officers, depending on what that person was arrested for. If they're some kind of felon with a bad record, history of assault, we're going to double up and take them. But at the minimum, you're pulling one officer off the island. We may have three to four working. Hopefully we have five and then some detectives. But, you know, there's a situation where it's, it's a coverage issue. So, you know, that's, that's really not captured. I guess I could, I could dig into the CAD and, and find that out. But that's a lot of, you know, that's a lot of man hours or officer hours that are kind of unaccounted for, where the other three or two or whatever. Then you have court, you know, they're pulled off for court. And then you have, every once in a while, they take off. You know, they, they live a little bit.
They have a vacation?
They have vacation. Imagine that. So there's all those kind of factors in there that, that kind of skew this a little bit. And you're not really seeing the full behind the scenes of the numbers.
So do we have a magistrate on call?
We have a magistrate on call, but the issue is that magistrate is shared with other folks. And we're talking with Judge Corpening now about doing a virtual magistrate, which will be a home run. The district attorney yesterday, I had a meeting with her. She came to the office, to the PD here, and I had a meeting with her. And she's going to check on the status of that. That virtual magistrate kind of doing a Zoom, so to speak, instead of having to physical come down here and do the stuff, that is going to pretty much eliminate a lot of our headache. But the bottom line answer to your question is, it's difficult to get a magistrate here. And it's normally on the weekends, on the Fridays, which again, that's when we're the busiest. But it's, it's spread out very thin. It's not a, as you know, we do have a magistrate's office there. It's a, it's a, it's a great option, but it's not always an option. It's not always available to us.
So I guess the other question is, well, first of all, it seems like that's the piece that muddies up the time, right?
Yes, sir.
But if we had one, let's say we have one in town, do we have the ability to, to man the prisoners or man the?
Well, you know, we just got, we've got, you know, three, three holding cells about there. When these guys and gals, when they, when they arrest somebody, they are completely processed. I mean, we've got an AFIS machine. We fingerprint them. We photograph. They are packaged up, ready to go. The only thing that we really do at the county facility is drop them off. When, when we take them over there, all the paperwork is done, pretty much, except the magistrate piece. They'll fill out everything that they need and then they'll go and they'll swear before the magistrate and the magistrate will set the bond. If the magistrate's here, all that's already done. So they are pretty much completely packaged when they get transported to the, to the jail. I mean, they literally walk in, everything's done, and they drop the prisoner off.
So you would still have to transport them, but it would cut down the time to do it if you had.
Irregardless, if they're going to be in custody, if it's a secure bond, even if the magistrate is on site and they get, they get like a 1,500 bond, $1,500 bond, and the person says, well, I don't have $1,500. I can't get a bond from right now. I don't have it. They're going to get transported. So there's no way around that. We can't house them here for any length of time because at that point, it turns into a custody thing. And what we have basically is just realistically temporary. You know, we can hold you for a little while until that processing gets to a point where it's, okay, man, we've done everything we can do. We've got to get you in, in some kind of more permanent facility.
So the sheriff couldn't come pick them up?
Don't say it.
Yes, sir. It just realistically, I'm just, it's not going to happen. This is not going to happen because.
You're turning into custody of your.
Well, it's, they just, they don't have the manpower either. I mean, the bottom line, I mean, they just don't have it. I mean.
So a common arrest, like a DWI or a fistfight or something, you're talking about one or two guys are out of the picture for four hours, three, four hours?
I would say a minimum of two, but potentially up to three, depending on if it's a weekend and like Jay was talking about, you know, we can get a magistrate here, you know, that processing time is a little bit more of the DWI than it is for other things because you have to do, you have to tick off certain things that are required. But you're looking, yeah, pretty much a minimum of a couple hours. Now, an officer wouldn't necessarily, it wouldn't be a two on one thing without depending unless the person was violent. If it's just a DWI and I transport you off the island.
I know you can't give a specific.
You're looking at a minimum of two hours.
On a, on a typical July evening, how many, how many on the, on the street police officers are on duty?
Five to seven. And that includes the detective aspect. That includes supervisory.
Well, I mean, out there in the field, I mean.
Hoping five, probably a max of seven. And then again, I'm not going to get locked into a, to a number for obvious reasons.
Chief, I'm just looking at your numbers from before. 132 arrests, two officers, say, just conservatively speaking, 500 man hours over the course of four months committed to transporting up and back.
It just, it seems like such an interesting decision to make on the fly of, do I deal with this and now I'm out of the picture for something bigger?
Well, they have to make those decisions all the time. There are certain times. I didn't want to speak for the chief, but I know from prior chief told me there are days they have to make priority calls. Do I go deal with this or do I go deal with that?
If there's ways that we can write people citation, even though it may be, I mean, it may be a misdemeanor. If, if we know who you are, you haven't given us any problem. I mean, we make those discretionary decisions all the time on whether to physically arrest you or give you a citation and set a court date for you. But if there's any doubt, I support my folks 100%. They have the discretion to make that decision. They don't call me and say, hey, do I need to arrest, you know, Lynn Barby because, man, he's kind of a squirrely guy. Now you make that decision.
Answer is yes on that one.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, but they make that decision.
If I get pulled over, please arrest me because I don't want to hear about.
But it also falls the other way. You know, they, we know who he is. We can identify you. You messed up a little bit and it could be a misdemeanor. We're going to issue a citation. Now on DWI and that other stuff, that doesn't count because there's, there's license requirements. There's DMV requirements. The officers cannot keep custody of that. They must go before magistrate. You must do a revocation order. There's no discretion on a DWI unless you just decide not to do anything. Once, once you make the decision to arrest for DWI, that person has got to go before a magistrate. There's just no, there is no discretion on that.
For a number of those though, I mean, a virtual meeting with the magistrate would save.
Home run.
Hundreds of man hours.
Yes, sir.
And is it, is it IT? Is there something statutory that's?
It's an experimental stage. I mean, it's kind of floating over through other parts of state. But I know George, Judge Corpening is on board with it and Sunny, I've let Sunny kind of take the lead on that. Everything about that to me and everything I've talked with Sunny about is 100% positive. And I made, and she's going to check. Of course, you know, we're in a, we're in a transition period with the district attorney. But she came yesterday and she's very supportive of it. So I feel like that'll happen sooner than later and we'll be able to see the benefits from that. So.
So much work gets done that way these days.
Well, chief, I think your presentation here just highlights, you know, the workload that your department does for us. And, you know, we could sit up here and give you accolades for hours, but we do appreciate you.
Sure.
Chief, can you give me that number again for the self-initiated contact?
Total over four months was over 4,400.
Okay.
And that's again, May, June, July, and August. And it's going to drop off because it is what it is. But those are the, that's kind of your shoulder dates.
Yeah, we get those to Bruce and just, we don't need a big chart, but just kind of the numbers because it helps us communicate to the public.
I try to get everything like on one page, you know, big overview.
If it's more than one page, probably not going to.
Absolutely. Yes, sir.
Don't hide it, don't hide it in a 30-page document.
Yes, sir. And it's broken down. I mean, I've got them. I can go into minutia, but I didn't, you know, high level.
Thank you, chief. We appreciate you.
Thank you, chief.
Bruce, storm recovery update.
Wait, what? Thank you, mayor and council. Not going to rehash the event. You guys were aware. You know how much rain we got and what we dealt with. But I will go over some of the damage. But first I wanted to, you know, thank our employees, citizens, council, everyone who helped respond to this. You know, this came on us like this. We were prepared for a tropical storm, just in case it got named, but the response was unbelievable from our emergency services, police, fire, and others. It was like muscle memory. Everybody just snapped into place and went to work. It was amazing. But there were some unsunk areas you don't hear about. I mean, of course, police and fire, amazing. But our operation guys were out there, utility guys were out there in the middle of this, you know, blinding rain, fixing things and dealing with the flooding, taking boats to service pumps, I mean, putting their lives at risk too. Then we had people like Sheila who was here. Town Hall was closed, but she stuck around, answered all the phone calls. It were just nonstop, updating social media, helping house the people who were displaced, came to Town Hall. And then Heather came in from, with help Eric over at the rec center to house these people with the Red Cross. It was amazing what she did when she was here.
Can I add to the Sheila story a little bit? Because this was, I'm so glad I could laugh about it now. Remember, this was not a named storm. The EOC had just been opened. We, there were no shelters. The Red Cross wasn't prepared. No, no, but nothing. So I walk into Town Hall. I'd been over at the EOC and I walk in, because I had to sign the actual emergency order. And basically with nowhere to put these people, they're, you know, take them to the safest place? You know, Town Hall. So they were just dropping them off here. So I come in and there are literally dogs just running around and families. And these people are quite stunned about the situation. And most of them were visitors or a lot of them were visitors. And Sheila's just operating this like she's, I can't describe it. It's like she just gets it all organized. She makes them comfortable. She gets them what they need. And that is so far out of her role, her normal role. I was stunned. So Sheila, thank you. I mean, others did as well, but that one I saw firsthand of, here's a problem that you never prepare for. You had no idea you were going to be doing that when you come in this morning. But she just did it. And that was awesome. Thank you.
And she was great. We had people like Paul, who's back there filming this right now for us, closed Town Hall. He went straight, he's a volunteer, he volunteers the fire department, went straight here, over there, went to work. So I mean, people just stepped up everywhere. Of course, we missed, if we didn't mention our, the families and spouses of the people employed here, what they did. Alan, fire chief's wife, was in the EOC typing up requests to the county. So she was helping. I know my wife is at home dealing with the flood and, you know, I'm not there to help her. She's dealing with all that and then still making me, you know, helping me when I get home and turn around the next day and have to go do it again. So I know the spouse and family and council was excellent at us, helping us get messages out and addressing some of these things. And it was great. And you know, we feel for all the citizens and businesses who suffered. And, but the businesses have come back out and fed our employees and we've had a great response to that. There's too many to list, but it's amazing. I will say for those damaged, who personally had damage, we've been working with the state. They've done their assessments. You know, the state has declared emergency one, so there'll be some individual assistance and public assistance from the state. We're hoping to get the threshold that meets a federal disaster. We're working with New Hanover, Brunswick, and everyone. State came down, believe we'll meet that threshold at some point. Once that happens, the Department of Insurance will come down and set up something here to help with insurance claims. So we're hoping to have that really soon. One of the other responses to the disaster, we will be picking up debris tomorrow, possibly even this afternoon, some debris to pick up. We'll start. We're still waiting on our site to be approved, but we, in the meantime, we'll take it to the landfill just to help speed up this process.
When you say site, is it temporary disposal site?
Site, right. Yeah, with stage sites. We have that. But as far. Site, right. Yeah, with stage sites. So we have that. Um, but as far as damages, I also want to say thanks to our legislative. We've met, Mayor and I've met with some of our legislators, congressmen and other ones and commissioners helping us out there. So we've got a lot of help from all over. Public response has been great. But as far as damages, you know, our public damage that the town suffered, probably the, the most significant one is our Texas pump, which is, which is so important. It, it just completely fried in this event, you know, underwater. The brains of that thing flooded and it killed it. Uh, we will have that back up and running. We've had an auxiliary pump there now in case it's tropical storms. We got a pump on the way. Should be set today. And Brian can answer this. Actually, we think we may improve on what Texas does. We've got two eight-inch pumps coming in. So it may be an even better situation than was prior.
If I could, Bruce, last time that happened, Brian, I think it was, this is a question that will inevitably come up and maybe again at the stormwater workshop, open house rather. The factory presets on that will be adjusted before it gets installed. I think it was an inch and a half and then it triggers the pumps to activate.
Yeah, it's.
You overrode that.
Yeah, the inch and a half is, uh, it's antiquated. That was, that was ruled out years ago, um, when they determined it needed to be used in a, in a higher capacity. Uh, for this event, what it, what had occurred is our tech came in Friday, assessed the situation or the water got up into the components, all the components. Uh, the pump itself, we believe is okay from what he could tell. Um, but it got into the brains of the system and completely much destroyed that. So what had happened was, looking back on the logs that he could see, was that the, the, the pump faulted out because of sheer overload. About everything we had overloaded in that volume, when you've got it coming from every which direction, too much for that pump to handle, faulted the pump out, which led to water level rise into the components and that's where we are now. Uh, so what Bruce was talking about for the, for the folks down there, um, we've got, we, uh, we had a contractor come in yesterday. Uh, they've already called an emergency locate in. We're going to improve the situation in an interim fashion because anything we do on the primary pump, the submersible, is going to take fourteen-plus days. So we can't really wait that long. We can't gamble on that. So we're going to have a contractor come in, tie in to the existing force main that's there with a larger connection, a twelve-inch connection. And we're going to have two eight-inch pumps in coordination with the auxiliary six-inch there now. And that will meet the demands of what, what's coming in there. And in the background, we're working on upgrading and trying to fix the primary components. So that's where we stand.
Yeah. For council, that's one of the things that I expressed certainly from my opinion to Bruce and Brian is that we've got a lot of things going on, but this to me is the highest priority item we have. And the reason is there are people in recovery down there fixing their homes that were flooded and we have a tropical storm or whatever it is, PTC nine or unless they've named it this morning. Um, doesn't look like it's going to be bad, but of course this thing didn't look like it was going to be bad either.
Yeah.
Um, so I think it's important that we get capacity in there and you guys have jumped all over. I appreciate that.
Absolutely. We've had to pull a lot of favors to get, try to make this happen in a very.
I'm confused. The pump, the pump itself was overloaded. I mean, it's either running or it's not running. How's it overloaded?
Dear, that's a technical question. I'm saying that, that's what our, the tech that came in from flight, uh, that's what they've said. It became just.
Don't they have rest periods?
When you've got water coming in from every which direction and just pushing it so hard, which the same thing kind of occurred at Greenville too. It's not designed for twenty inches all in that like that. I mean, it's designed for, for a high rate of, of speed coming in, but when you've got it pushing so hard from every angle, it just could not handle that.
Can I ask Brian a question? Since we got him here?
Sure.
So, right. So a pump, like say one of these twelve-inch pumps at the lake, and say you're pumping the lake down and the system's dry everywhere. We see something coming, right? So you get your fifteen hundred gallons per minute or what have you.
Right.
What happens if you're pumping it and you're pumping it into a full Hennecker's ditch, now there's some back pressure on that pump. That gallons per minute goes down?
Yeah.
And it's a lot more pressure on the pump, right?
Yeah.
That, would that explain what you're talking about?
Head pressure will definitely reduce your, yeah. Head, head pressure will definitely, you know, create some issues with you as far as pumping capacity.
Uh, when you're pumping into a full ditch, what do you think the gallons per minute on those pumps are?
Uh, completely full, like what we saw?
Yeah.
Uh, I mean, you're still, they're designed for about forty-six sixty, four thousand six hundred and sixty gallons per minute. That's prime conditions, peak, uh, you know, max, not your, um, your RPMs and whatnot. So, um, I would say in that situation, you're probably pumping four thousand. That's kind of what we factored in. Cause you're also pumping, you're pumping into a ditch, but you're pumping with the flow of the ditch too. So you're not, it's not coming back on you as much.
But it definitely.
At, at a certain point. I mean, once it's completely flooded, it's going every which direction.
But it's not pumping out. I just don't know if people realize that, that it's not, when you're pumping into a full system, you're not getting that a hundred percent pass.
Yeah, you can't push the ditch.
Right.
Right. You can't. So the ditch is, so the Hennecker is one of the things for everybody to remember is that is a, um, it is a gravity-fed ditch that transports water. So.
Yeah.
You can pump all you want. When it's full, it's not going to carry anymore or you're going to pump it into the, somewhere else. It's going to go somewhere else. But.
Correct.
Let me ask another, um, worst-case scenario question. So we got two twelve-inch pumps running full speed ahead out of the lake during this. What if one of them goes out?
It's a good question. That's why we've purchased a third one.
I know.
We're at the pump house. That's what we ask ourselves all the time. What if?
Don't expect an exact answer, but I, I, and I'm well aware, we've got a, because good old Joe here reminds us all the time that we've got a third one coming along so that there will be redundancy. As, the public should know that when a third pump comes, that doesn't mean three pumps will be running, but it will ensure that two will be running.
Right.
I, I just, in my mind, I kept thinking that all throughout this. What if one of those would have blown up on us?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, you.
Would the lake still be high today if one of those pumps had gone bad?
Uh, no. I mean, we would have gotten it down. The King Tide's definitely killed us on that whole, you know, weekend plus.
I will share Senator Raymond was here with, uh, Representative Miller and he was just asking questions. He says, he said, let me tell you one thing I've learned in my life. And I said, what's that? He said, never buy one pump. He said, you always buy pumps in twos.
I think he and I, Mark and I both, you can't have enough pumps.
Mark says four.
Another question. Did, uh, did saltwater and freshwater from the lake, did that come together?
Yes.
Did it intermingle?
Yes. Yes. I mean, when you look at the drone footage, there's some really good footage out there from this event. You can see it physically.
Looking at it right now.
Yeah, it physically.
Well, it appears to be, but.
Yeah.
I also saw a lot of video showing a lot of water pouring into the marina. So that's, and.
We'll show that here in a minute.
We've got our, uh, beautification committee chairwoman here and we've been discussing what, you know, has saltwater intrusion been an issue at the lake? And is that something to worry about?
I, I don't think the, uh, I think the, uh, large volume of freshwater that came from above probably fixed that for us.
Colluded it.
Yeah, I think we're okay. Yeah.
I think most of the water that I saw was running towards the harbor.
It does. It does.
On those pumps, last one for me, Brian, and you and I talked about it briefly, but Texas and Greenville particularly, um, when Texas goes back online, the ability to automate those two.
Yes.
Pump stations, I know is a priority.
We're looking to upgrade the, yeah.
Just like for the lake.
Yeah. That we're, we're looking forward to, um, upgrading the entire system to have all that kind, you know, that connectivity, uh, along with, uh, video surveillance as well, so we can actually see what's going on, you know.
Awesome. Yeah, I think it's important that we, I think everybody would agree with this. It's important that, yeah, we got to fix this stuff, but let's also make it better if we can.
Yeah, fortification.
While you're at it.
And, you know, we all, there were some interesting numbers flew around and, uh, I did some of my own calculations and they were staggering. I don't, to my calculations, it appeared to me that there was enough rain flowing into the lake to fill it up about thirty-five tons.
Sounds about right.
And I, when I did my math and I came up with that, I thought there's no way, you know? And I did all my math over again to double check. And again, I, and I was being, being generous with some of my, so when I calculated the volume of the lake, I was being very generous. I think it's, the lake is much smaller than the calculation I made. But it's just staggering to think. I think that, to me, puts to bed this idea that if only the lake was deeper, we could solve all these problems.
Would not have mattered.
I never believed that in the first place.
We could have had ten more pumps and it wouldn't have mattered.
It's all, we've always said it's about the pumps, not about the depth and the volume of it.
You'd hit the groundwater anyway.
Yeah, there's not a, there's not a pump. Well, there may be somewhere in the world, but there's no pump that I'm aware of and certainly not one anywhere within fiscal reach of this body to pump a billion gallons of water.
Yeah.
It just, I mean, you just can't.
Well, yeah. And I say it's about the pumping capacity, not to say that in a magic world, it could have handled this one, but just in general.
Yeah. If, if you had dug the lake deeper, you would have hit groundwater. It would have filled faster. So it's all about how fast you can pump the water out of there.
Yeah.
Right? Deeper would, would help a little, but still it's going to rely, it's going to come down to pumping.
Sure.
And can anybody tell me, I, I'm curious. We, we keep talking about this twenty-point-nine inches of rain. I might, I believe we're talking about from midnight Sunday to one o'clock in the afternoon.
Twelve-hour event.
Okay.
It was eighteen inches to one o'clock. The twenty-point-nine is the rest of that day. There was a couple of inches that came in.
Okay.
We had six inches the night before.
That, that was, thank you. That was a question. So Sunday after the, Sunday from say noon to midnight, you'd say about six inches?
Yeah.
And cause, you know, we're throwing around twenty-point-nine. We should really be talking about twenty-six-point-nine.
Exactly.
And it's twenty-four hours.
The, um, when we met with, uh, Congressman Rousier, one of the things we pointed out is this is far worse for us, um, than Florence. And that sort of set those representatives back in their seats to understand because it's such a small geographic area, it doesn't seem, you know, Florence took out half the state, right? I mean, it was a much larger disaster. But for the residents of Carolina Beach, this was much worse than Florence.
Absolutely. It's like if you shoved the intensity of Florence into a twelve-hour period.
Agreed. So. All right. Bruce, did you have?
Yeah, I've got still more damage. I was going to.
Yeah, go ahead.
That was the first one. We also have.
We're just all interested because everybody's interested in how we're going to make it better. So appreciate Brian coming up.
And the damage stuff, Bruce, this is obvious. This is an inventory that if a type-two disaster is declared at the federal, you know, with assistance from the federal government, we've inventoried that which we hope to be.
Right, right. I just want to make y'all aware what those issues are because a lot of them are not visible because the response from staff and volunteers have, like the lake looks like nothing's ever happened there besides the, the boats and dock, which there, those will all be removed shortly. Um, so you don't see these damages like, but there's on canal, we lost a bulkhead. Dolphin bulkhead is, was undermined. We're sandpiper parking lot started lifting up during the storm. It's cracking now. We have some issues there. And these are not so visible from the naked eye. So you don't see a lot of damage, but there's a lot of money involved here. Um, we had some stormwater issues degrade into the headworks, had some damage, some other things at the wastewater treatment plant. Um, the, we've had roof leaks, um, the Alabama restrooms we may have to shut down. There, we thought was just some leaks, but now there may be some more issues there for the roof and the drywall on there. Um, it's a sandpiper lot, we, you know, fencing at the lake, that's already been done. We've had just different little things at, at each building, a little bit of leaks at the parks and rec. We had flooding a little bit in the fire department. Dinghy docks got a little damaged. Mooring ball's a little damaged.
Lost a truck too, didn't we?
We lost the truck that I think's going to be, I think it's already been totaled. Um, probably got to flush every vehicle we have that entered water just to make sure it lasts longer. So we've got a lot of claims going there. And then on top of the, um, debris management, the, the next thing I have on the agenda for you guys is the, a budget amendment to, to start the pay for this stuff and hopefully we get that declaration to get FEMA reimbursement. We do think some state help was coming too. And as we met with legislators, they want to know our needs, our emergency needs, and we're going to put a list there together for that. So there was, you know, residents really saw the damage you can see out there that's visible. The town suffered damage too that's not as visible. The residents and business suffered just, you know, unthinkable amount of damage. But.
Bruce, what about damage? One of the concerns I have is our stormwater system rarely runs at a hundred percent. Well, it ran at a hundred percent for quite a long time. So anywhere there's any leakage in that system, at some point you're going to have sinkholes, cave-ins, potholes, just because it's going to eat out, we, we're in sand, right? So it's going to eat out an area that we don't see. So I assume we'll expect those, if they're going to happen in the next month or so.
Yeah, they could happen thirty days from now still. They, those things happen as a, I guess you saw here in Florence. I know I saw where I was in Florence. They just kept popping up every day. It'd be a new one where a road would collapse, where the pipes underneath it had, had been so much pressure and it's gone. It just sudden changed. So it's things we look forward to. Hopefully not, but that's what we're anticipating and monitoring.
So for council, one of the things I just, this was a big education for me. Um, others may have been through it, but, um, staff has done a fantastic job. Obviously the response was fantastic, but the, the process that they have to go through, let's just take one thing, debris removal. Sure, we could call up some friend of the town and go pick up debris. Um, but that's not how the process works. We have a responsibility to the public first to put it out for bid, take bids and spend their money wisely. Uh, we also have requirements that we have to provide, I guess almost at every level, the county, the state, and then ultimately to FEMA if it, if it gets that far. And if we don't follow those processes, we could not be reimb, we may not be reimbursed for that. So that does cause a little bit delay. I've tried to explain that to folks that it's very important that we do it properly, um, to minimize, uh, the cost to the, to the town, to, to leverage those emergency funds that the state and the federal government has for us. I mean, it's why they have them is to help us. And, um, so I've seen a ton of work, Brian and his staff, uh, more than I will even understand to make sure that all of this is executed, um, properly. So I want to thank you guys for, for that. I just, it just doesn't get seen. And it, it appears to, it appears that we're being slow. We're not being slow. We're being purposeful. So.
That's all I've got for damage on this. The, it's amazing the marina didn't suffer damage. I don't know if Jeremy can show a video of that, of what the marina was like.
While he's pulling, while he's pulling that up, it appears as if the, uh, the dredge stocks held up pretty well.
Yeah, the lake was amazing.
Real quick, we've shown this video at every level of government and the people who know Carolina, myself being a longtime resident, this is just never, I mean, this is just, this is water running out of the town into the marina. Remember what we usually protect? Well, to the Congressman Rousier, our entire system protects us from the ocean and hold the ocean back. We're not designed to hold rainwater. We deal with rainwater, but not like this.
Was it Senator Raymond or, or maybe Representative Miller said, would be a nice little feature at the marina.
Yeah, our own little waterfall.
If you didn't know the context.
There's the other one there. It's just.
It's a ladder.
Sure, it might have been. Yeah, this was Jared. I think Jared did these, um, yeah, yeah. And there was mullets and snakes and everything that was flowing through that water.
So we had significant damage, Bruce, private property damage, right? On canal, there were some houses, houses undermined and.
Yes, we've, how, how many?
We've got at least three homes that have been, Jeremy, Jeremy, right there. Three homes, I believe, that are not condemned, but just not habitable right now.
Yeah.
Okay. And then just not that it's our problem, but I have toured Curie Beach a couple of times. I mean, they lost dunes where water, you know, their, their outfall pipes that the DOT put in that discharged to the ocean could not handle all this rain. And so it just found a path, took dunes and beach accesses and everything with it on the way out. The water had to go somewhere.
Three buildings at Ocean Dunes condos were condemned.
Yep.
The rebuilding, not three, not three units.
Is it possible to send us those videos and those photos?
Yeah, certainly.
They may be tough to.
It's a large file.
Zip drive because you may not be able to mail them.
I even tried the zip file and had problems sending it in because of the video.
Put it on a five-minute clock.
So that's the damage. If you, I don't know if you want to go to the next one and I'll ask you.
What was that, Bruce?
Um, that's it for the damage and my little report on that, I'll answer your questions, or, and I'll be ready to discuss the next one with you about approval on that.
All right, well, I have one comment to make before we move on, you guys did fine job, you know who else did a darn good job with the response to all this? Mayor Lynn Barbie, thanks, you did a darn good job and I appreciate.
Thank you, Mike, I appreciate it.
That's leadership, right?
I will, uh, I will tell you, when you run for mayor, you don't think about these things. And, uh, and all you do is you just work as hard as you can, as long as you can, to dang near collapse, I mean, that's all, that's all you can do, you just do your best. And so, but thank you, Mike, I appreciate that.
It was exhausting, it was an exhausting week, wasn't it?
Yeah, I always tell people, the mayor has no power in this town until you declare an emergency, and then suddenly everything is your responsibility.
Well, I also think we need to appreciate the fact that we basically let Lynn take the lead, and we shared what he put out, instead of putting out a bunch of, everybody doing their own take on what's going on, we basically said, okay, mayor's got the lead, let's put the information out that he's putting out, and I think that was a great response to the community.
Yeah, we fell into an organized, not planned, but we, we were organized, I, I mean, Joe, that first day, I did very few media interviews because it was just chaos, Joe took a couple, I think Jay had, I don't know, maybe all of you had some, I don't know. Uh, but that helped, and then I was able to pick those up the, the next day, so great team effort by everybody.
When Jim Cantori calls you at six thirty, says, what's going on up there, woke up, what it's reading, get yourself sorted out and give me a call.
So he knew what was going on.
He, he said, put your toupee on, you're going on TV.
Adjust your toupee before you make a phone call.
So Bruce, I think now you need to put a budget before us and talk about, cause we, obviously we have to pay to keep this moving, and then hopefully we get reimbursed, right?
You're correct, we do this, we have to take it out of the general fund, that's why we have that large fund balance for these type of things, um, and hopefully get reimbursed, but sometimes it takes a while, you know, we just got our final check from, from Florence just a month or two ago. So it takes time, and we haven't even had that declaration yet, so hopefully get that.
Decision point on that, or is it just sort of floating out there, there's no hard time where it'll be.
No, we're hoping they'll go ahead and declare it, I know there's some concern about the, the funding the federal government right now, but I believe they've got a deal and continuing resolution to fund it, once that's approved, that doesn't affect FEMA's funding, so hopefully it's done. Uh, but we still gotta meet that threshold, supposedly FEMA's gotten, the, the money they have is a lot tighter, and you got, they've changed the thresholds and you gotta meet it, but between New Hanover Brunswick and Pender and probably Columbus, I think there's probably enough damage, what we understand that we should get to that threshold.
Yeah, can I throw out a little thing on the, just, um, I think, I think we need to also, obviously thank this council, but the prior, really the prior two councils, um, who made the reserve fund, recovering the reserve fund a priority. This has been a six, seven year priority for us, and, uh, we would not be able to respond to this emergency if we had not. So, um, thanks to you guys, but also to, to the prior councils that, that have made this priority, cause this is why we have it, right, it's so that we can pay for these recoveries, get people back working today, get businesses back open today, and then we'll figure the FEMA stuff out, we, we don't want residents or businesses to have to wait while we figure all that out. We need to get the debris up, get streets clean, so on so forth, so kudos to those councils as well.
So our initial request, we already realizing this was the initial was eight hundred thousand dollars, we, we will probably exceed that and come back to you for additional funding as we get costs on these things, this is just our spitball at it before we knew, now we're starting to get costs coming in like on the pumps, um, and we got some estimates on bulkhead and stuff, but, but right now it's eight hundred thousand dollars what we're initially requesting to respond to these damages, including the debris pickup.
So you need to vote from us on that, Bruce?
Yes.
Does, is everybody okay with that number, I mean, we don't have a lot of specifics in front of us, but obviously Bruce can give you those specifics if you want, but.
Well, I, I am confused at how this works though, so we're not, we're not voting on a specific funding. Is this a, a disaster response type of open-ended allowance to spend?
Yeah, we're telling Bruce, this is my understanding correct, Bruce, but we're telling Bruce that he has damages well in excess of eight hundred, but we're gonna give him eight hundred thousand to go fix those issues, to pick up the debris, to fix the Texas Avenue pump. So basically, we're giving him manager's discretion to spend eight hundred thousand on that problem, he can't spend on those stuff, right?
It's gotta be emergency response, a large portion of this will be debris management. Really large portion of it.
If this were a name storm and we knew it was on its way in, at a, at a special meeting, we would have given you that authority.
Right, right.
Anticipating that there will, would be.
So without a, without having declared a disaster, this wouldn't be something we could do, and I'm just trying to understand from a.
Well, we can spend town money however we.
We, we could, but then it'd be more of an itemized.
Yeah, we'd have a lot of item butage.
Then we would had to itemize and vote on specific things, since the disaster was declared, we're able to give Bruce discretion to spend.
Yeah, there's certain things we gotta act on without, we can't wait till next month to come back to council.
Yeah, all right.
But we'll itemize them all and you'll see all the expenses, cause we have to, FEMA's gonna wanna see every penny we spend.
All right, so I'm gonna make a motion to allocate eight hundred thousand dollars from the general fund, uh, for disaster cleanup and repair, uh, as presented by the town manager. Motion on the floor, all in favor?
Aye. So, ma, may I ask another question on this, uh, just.
Oh, I don't have that.
Excuse me.
I don't have that.
Twenty four dash, one, two, three, eight.
Oh, maybe I do have that, twenty four, one, two, three, eight.
One, one, three, one, two, three, eight.
Four, two, three, eight, all right. Do I redo a motion? So I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion to rescind that motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Whatever the proper term was, Robert's rules guy will be after me before it's all over. Uh, so I'd make a motion to allocate eight hundred thousand dollars, uh, as presented by the town, for disaster recovery as presented by the town manager and noted in resolution twenty four dash, one, two, three, eight. Motion on the floor, all in favor?
Aye. Okay, now may I, may, may I ask my question before we move on?
Sure.
So let's say, and I'm just helping educate myself and whoever's watching. So let's just say for example, this comes out to about a million dollars worth of damages to the public, not individuals, but to the public, and FEMA has just declared a disaster, and we go to FEMA and we present them with an itemized list, what is tip, what does FEMA typically reimburse on something like, is it a percentage? Or how does that, how does that process work?
Pretty much almost a hundred percent on, depending on what the item is.
Doesn't the state match some piece of it? Like seventy five, twenty five, FEMA kicks in seventy five, and then the state, we're supposed to kick in twenty five, but the state kicks in the twenty five, I think is the way it's playing, is that right?
We'll work this through the state up to FEMA, but, yeah, so we will, we will put in man hours spent, gas used, we, our staff not only fighting this storm and responding to it, they're also tracking every ti, how long a car ran during the storm, how much gas we used, how many hours they worked, um, any supplies they bought, and we will, we will, there's certain things they give us criteria, and we just gotta, as long as it's on paper and it's an approved policy.
Lot of overtime too.
Disaster pay.
Disaster pay.
So FEMA might say, okay, we'd declare that one million dollars justifiable, but they're typically go on a seventy five percent basis, and then it's up to the state to determine how much they would wanna add.
And they'll review everything, yes, we know with the marina, you know, we, the last, after Florence and Matthew, the marina, yeah, we couldn't, they said, they didn't give it all, you know, we knew it was a two, three million dollar pair, and they gave us a lot less than that. Cause they, they, they'll review it, but I think expenditures like this, the damage ones are a little harder to do, but the actual, we can track expenses and show them they'll reimburse.
So on damages, I, I guess they almost like they're looking like a insurance company might be to say, okay, your, your marina got wrecked, but it was already pretty darn wrecked when this happened, we're not gonna reimburse you a hundred percent of the rebuild. Okay.
Exactly.
Also, Mike, I think one of the learning things out of this for people is, this is why we have emergency plans and procedures. Uh, obviously the goal is all life safety first, um, you know, get everybody in a safe place and, and, and protect as much property as you can. But this is why we have those procedures, I can tell you that, you know, it's not unusual for small towns, especially to get in trouble where it's like, well, my house is flooding and I need something, and I know the fire chief, and I know he has a pump, and so he comes over and helps me. Not that that's not honorable, but if it doesn't follow that process, then FEMA's gonna say, well, what, what pump did you send? Well, we didn't keep any records, how long was it used? Well, we didn't keep any records, why, what was the need? Well, we didn't keep any records. So that is why, if you, I, I would highly recommend to anybody, if you ever have the opportunity, just sit in the EOC during one of these things, it's amazing. It's an amazing process, but there's a reason for everything, and it's not that you don't wanna get help to that person, we probably would, just you may not be able to recover it if you, if you shoot from the hip too much.
So, I do have a question, it's a resident asked me the other day, and I don't know what the answer is, and is, so the insurance companies use a hundred year flood plan to dictate their rates. Will it change due to the storm?
Um, that'll be, Jeremy may know more what FEMA's plans are, how they do, I know they evaluate every so often flood planes. Again, we had two thousand eighteen, we adopted new maps, so I don't know if you use the response.
I don't think it floats on every storm, they're not constantly reevaluating, right, they have some regular period, I'm sure, do you know, Jeremy?
Yeah, this, they'll evaluate, you know, update their studies from our current map, we're under two thousand eighteen. So all the storms that are flooding events that have happened, they'll go back and look at historical, uh, data and see what needs to change or be reevaluated with the flood maps.
Well, this one's not gonna help the cost.
Well, building code two helped us last time, to the, to about a twenty percent reduction in rates.
For insurance.
For insurance purposes after the adoption of the twenty eighteen.
Oh, the, the flood maps, Jeremy, are they republished on a set cycle, like a seven years, or how's that go?
Uh, they like to give about every ten years, a new map adopted.
But not specifically, like it's?
But it's not a set year, but that's.
That's the goal.
Yeah.
The U D O may.
Right, so everything that happens over the course of those ten years is gonna affect how the next one, what is a, a hundred year event, how many inches in a day is that?
Well.
Cause I don't, it could be storm surge too, so it doesn't necessarily.
Yes, not necessarily inches of rain.
Well, okay, I, I don't wanna stop.
Inland it may be a little more rain, but here, cause storm surge caused flood, it'd be different.
Yeah, I've talked to so many people about flood insurance, um, we need to continue to, flood insurance is great, it is limited, it is not a panacea to pay for everything that, that happened to you. Uh, but I've been surprised by the number of residents who don't have flood insurance because their mortgage company told them they didn't need it to qualify for the mortgage. I, I, I've lived here my whole life and I, I don't think I've ever not had flood insurance, you know, so, um, I've never been flooded. But i- if you're out of that flood zone, it's quite in, quite inexpensive, that doesn't mean it's cheap, but it's, it's not as much as you'd think. So I encourage everyone to take a look, it's also a great time just to take a look and see how you fared and what your coverages are. Um, cause most of us just pay a bill, we stroke a check, that's my insurance, but we don't actually read what's covered. Um, guilty, myself, all right, last item on the agenda, uh, before council comments, is Bruce, you wanted to give an update on Ocean Boulevard?
Yeah, Ocean Boulevard sidewalk is, um, finally, all, everyone's approved, state, all agreement, everything's done, we're ready to proceed. And as I think I've mentioned to you the past, that it was an additional cost based on all the stormwater changes required by the state. Um, we originally thought it was gonna be like a hundred and thirty seven thousand or a hundred and thirty six thousand, but the total came in, just came in yesterday, is a hundred and, just right under a hundred and twenty seven thousand dollars. Um, and once we, that's approved, we'll give notice to proceed, to start the sidewalk, um, council can do it today or if you, or whatever you like, but we can't issue the notice proceed until that's approved.
So you're asking us, you've told us that this was coming, but you're asking us to approve that additional funds today? Oh, if we desire or.
Budget amendment?
Yes, it would be also a budget.
Yeah, I really, I don't know what you guys think, but we're, we're two years at least in on this, I really don't wanna wait, just, I'd rather discuss it now if you have any concerns, do you have the budget amendment, do I have the budget amendment for this?
I've got it. Well, the, it's a change order, we'll, we'll come back with a budget amendment, so approve the change order, then we will do the budget transfer at the next meeting.
Does anybody have any concerns about proceeding? I mean, I always hate to spend a hundred and.
I don't, but I think that when we look at the budget amendment at the next meeting, I think we should consider clawing back that money from something somewhere else, I'd like to at least think of some options of, what could, what maybe shouldn't we do? And I'm not saying we get a hundred percent of that back, but we should consider.
Was the unknown amount that we knew, there would be something, but it was an unknown amount of money that was gonna be correlated to less pervious surface that we'd have to overcome.
Correct.
In order to make DOT satisfied, because they still own the stormwater management for that stretch of road.
Right.
For that entire road, roughly.
Right, yeah, to simplify it for the public, this, this additional cost is so that we could move the sidewalk closer to the road, because the original plan, which was for the most part rejected by residents, would have gone immediately by their properties, right? So to move it near the road, which I think everybody in the whole town was in favor of, including, including this council, um, did create some stormwater concerns, this, we've now identified those, and this is the cost of those stormwater concerns.
Impact, it's a ditch is in place.
Is that accurate?
That's exactly.
Well, it's not just this, it's the other four thirty seven as well, so to be clear.
True, true.
It's almost six hundred thousand dollars extra it costs.
So, do we have to approve this before the ball continues?
He's saying if we approve this now, he can start work.
Yeah.
Let's approve it now.
Okay, would you like to make a motion, Jay?
If I had, if I had something in front of me that.
I'll try, I'll try, so, um, what did you call this?
Change order.
Change order, so, uh, motion on the floor to, uh, approve the change order for hundred and.
Hundred and twenty six thousand, two hundred ninety seven dollars and twenty seven cents.
As the amount the town manager just said, uh, uh, to approve that change order to proceed with the Ocean Boulevard sidewalk. Motion on the floor, all in favor?
Aye.
Bruce, uh, we also need to make sure that we send out notification to the residents, this is gonna impact on ocean.
That'll be the first part of the notice proceed is to door hangers, emails and, and.
Should we do that like with the thirty days, if Halloween, prior to Halloween is the desired beginning? Construction to begin.
Right, I, I'll get, that sounds right, I'll get with project managers and make sure we're.
All right, all right, um, that's the last thing on the agenda, council comments, anybody?
I just have, I have, um, two, um, mosquito spray, spraying, do we have an update from the county when they're gonna come back out, I mean, I've heard number of residents that the mosquitoes are just.
It's horrible, but I'll.
Horrible.
I've been in direct contact with them, I posted two updates they sent to me, I've not had one from last week, I have not asked for one this week. But really, Bruce, I should, kinda out of my lane, I should have handed that off to you, I just had had a relationship with them about a different issue recently, so I just responded to that same email, but, um, I can give you, if you don't have the guy's contact, he is awesome, he responds quickly, uh, and he's very technical in his descriptions about what they're gonna do, so I agree with Deb, it's probably a good idea just to check back and, and especially down, I'm hearing, I mean, mosquitoes are bad everywhere, they're really bad around my house, but we're good, my house. But I am hearing quite a number of complaints down on the north end, Florida Avenue, I'm not sure that that service gets down.
North end is horrible right now, you can't walk outside.
Maybe add that to your discussion with him.
And then the other, the other one is a happy, happy one, um, bike rodeo is this Sunday from two to five. Come on out and have some fun, if you got some kids, if you still, if you wanna volunteer, we're still looking for volunteers.
Awesome, thank you, Deb, Jay?
I just have one, um, it amazes me, uh, that this town, sixty nine hundred, seven thousand residents, how they come together, uh, during tragedy, I mean, we're, we're, even without a tragedy or without something horrific happening like, like this flood, this town is a community, right? But whenever we have something like this, it, it, it amazes me how we come together.
Hundred percent agree. Joe?
For the debris, is there a particular, uh, a plan to address one part of the town and work south to north or east to west?
I don't know if he's created the phases yet, meeting with them to see how they.
Okay, does stormwater open house, Bruce, do you have a date in mind?
Yes, um, it's the Wednesday, October, I think twenty third, I'll tell you. Yes, Wednesday, October twenty third, four to six.
Mapping their GIS image, re-showing where.
That's a stormwater, Bruce? That's a stormwater open house?
Yeah, it's stormwater open house.
And then finally, uh, Island Man had a great event, right, twenty two boats, wake and bake one, Jay, but I will point out that our boat wasn't in the water, which allowed them the opportunity to take.
It's your forfeit, is how they.
That's what they'd say. Thanks to Larry, they're kind of buried out there, making this move.
Yeah, there were, yeah, another two who were unsung heroes out there monitoring and watching and helping give me feedback during this event.
Thank you, Mike.
All right, um, y'all have been overlooking something, but I'm not allow it in light of the circumstance. No, Thursday is our bike pedestrian master plan update open house. So, uh, please, I guess Sheila or Kim, could, could put together a, a good social media post so we can all share that and get the word out to everybody, it's running, there's two separate times, it's gonna go tw, noon to two, both in here in the council chambers, so it's Thursday, twelve to two here, and also five to seven here, so if you're, you know, you have two different options to come in and see this, and, look, I, I've kinda. And look, I, I've kinda overlooked it myself, so, but we've got enough time to tell the public, but I hope we can get something out today so we can start promoting this.
Already out.
Oh, really? So you're way ahead of me. I, I appreciate it.
Sheila took care of this morning.
Okay. And I just, we, a, a nice crew from Pleasure Island went to the Bike Walk N C Summit. Some of them are still there. Today's the last day, but usually it's a Saturday, Sunday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday event. It had to be Sunday, Monday, Tuesday event, because there was a football game in Chapel Hill that messed it up or something like that. That's why I'm not there for the last day.
They probably wish they had.
Right. But it was very good. We had three of us from Carolina Beach, myself, Rodney Kidd chaired a bike and pedestrian committee, and Derek McNeil from the police department went. And then we had two folks from Kerry Beach, so it was a nice Pleasure Island contingent. We learned a lot, we were inspired, and we spent a little bit of time poking on the, the Bike Walk N C executive director about bringing the event to Carolina Beach in twenty twenty-six, so we'll see what we can do.
Look at Mike promoting tourism there.
That's right.
They would probably rather be at Carolina Beach too, so.
Hey, they, they were pretty excited about the idea.
Awesome. Anything else, Mike?
No.
You know, I don't have much. I've said a lot in this last week. Can't talk about it much, because you know, you guys know I'll get emotional, but just fantastic job by town staff, by the residents, even non-residents. Businesses helping businesses, neighbors helping neighbors. I spoke at the, you would know the North Carolina Mayor's Association meeting was this week, which I only got to go for about an hour, but I did get a chance to speak before them, and I said in a lot of ways, not that I would wish this to happen again, but in a lot of ways, it was a true blessing for me to see my community come together in such a divisive time. It was, it was remarkable to see. So anyway, kudos to every single person on this island. I mean, there isn't, you, you can't call out an organization, you can't call out a business, you can't call out a town employee. It was all hands on deck, so thanks to everybody. That's all I got. With that, meetings adjourned.